Hello, I am your proud superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process, but you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
Good evening. Before we start our public hearing, I just want to have a moment of silence for Dr. Tina Jeter, who passed away last night. She was a principal or administrator, adult ed, and so we're just going to take a moment to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Before we begin, there are some ground rules I need to go over before we continue this meeting. This is a public hearing on the superintendent's restructuring recommendations and other opportunities. All public comments should be related to this topic. Any other public comment should be kept until the next regular public meeting. Each member of the public wishing to speak may address the board for a total of three minutes. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring a bell, letting you know that you have one minute to wrap up. At the second sound of the bell, your three minutes are up. We have a lot of speakers tonight. I think we have over 50 speakers tonight, so please be respectful of others' time. If you run out of time, you may submit your comments in writing to Ms. Santiago. There is no boisterous conduct will be permitted. Time limits will be strictly enforced. There will be no personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or indecent language, no signs allowed inside the board meeting. I see signs, so we'll just permit them there as long as you don't hold them up and instruct other people's views. Speakers may not yield their time to other speakers. A speaker must refrain from naming employees. A person may address the board no more than twice during a single meeting. This is a difficult time. We encourage your input, but please be respectful. And Mr. Flores will read this in Spanish.
Thank you, Mr. Stallings. Would I note this in bienvenidos? "Antes de comenzar queremos establecer las reglas para esta reunión. Esta es una audiencia pública de las recomendaciones y oportunidades de recuperación presentado por la superintendente. Todos los comentarios de hoy deben estar relacionados a este tema. Cualquier otro comentario debe esperar hasta la próxima reunión regular de la junta. Cada miembro del público que quiera hablar puede dirigirse a la junta por un total de tres minutos. Al final de dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre para dejarle saber que le queda un minuto para concluir. Cuando suene el timbre por segunda ocasión, significa que se acabaron sus tres minutos. Tenemos muchas personas que quieren hablar esta noche, así que por favor sea un respetuoso del tiempo de los demás. Si no le da el tiempo, puede entregar su comentario por escrito a la señorita Santiago." No se permite conducta fluidosa. El tiempo límite será aplicado estrictamente. No se permiten ataques personales contra individuos. No se permite lenguaje vulgar o soez. No se permiten letreros dentro del salón de la reunión de la junta. Aquellos que tienen letreros, les pedimos que por favor no los alce. Una persona no puede cederle su tiempo disponible a otra persona. No se deben mencionar empleados por nombre. Una persona no puede dirigirse a la junta en más de dos ocasiones durante una misma reunión. Este es un periodo difícil y queremos escuchar sus observaciones, pero por favor mantengamos el respeto. Gracias.
Okay. Ms. Glenda?
I'm just going to call people in order that they sign up. First, we have Delicia Arnold Williams.
Hello, my name is Delicia Arnold Williams. I am a Hartford resident and I have three students that attend Hartford Public School. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about Renzulli. I have a child that attends Renzulli, and I know in the presentation it is proposed that they relocate to Capital Prep. And if anybody knows Renzulli or anybody knows Capital Prep, they're two special schools. They have two different spirits about them, and I would suggest they just stay where they are. There's eighth graders who have been at Waverly, Cornwall Street, and now where they currently are. And so if they just move to Capital Prep, it's not going to be their own building. The only, the next time they should move, if they have a space of their own, they'll call their own because those are really special students. Okay, now, on regards to Capital Prep. So I went to the meeting last night and I was happy. Thank you superintendent for providing those presentations. I did learn a lot, and one of the board members was thinking along the same lines I was thinking in terms of, we have to think outside the box. Yes, we understand we need to save. Everybody is crunching for money, but we need to come up with creative ways where we can keep our school open. When you think of Capital Prep, you think of pride, you think of passion, you think of family. You cannot recreate that anywhere you go. It's just something special. In addition, and I understand because we have more suburban school students at Capital Prep, this is where you get creative. How about considering, you know, the choice option? So the suburban schools, people who want to come, they could stay, but we could offer more seats to our Hartford residents because I know your first option is to provide equal education and quality education to our Hartford residents. So I urge you to all the board members, please vote against Capital Prep and consider different fundees for funding us. Thank you.
Tasha Rose.
Good evening. My name is Tasha Rose. I am a Hartford resident, and my child was actually one of many children from the Capital Community Magnet Academy that has been pretty much closed. She was then moved over to Capital Prep for housing to finish out her senior year. With that, she's a track runner, and she was not able to, you know, run track with Capital Prep while she's at Capital Prep, where she has to travel every day to Hartford High to run with a group of three other people that also are unable to attend their track or any sports with the schools in which they were displaced with. I've been told that these were C I A C guidelines. However, she's a senior and with only four people being able to run on her track team because she has no home, she has no school home, she does not have an opportunity to put her best in because she's unable to go to a school where she can be looked at by colleges. She is a good student, so she is able to receive academic scholarships, but there are other students who really look at those sports scholarships to get them through. And if we're going to restructure these schools, and it's not any fault of these children, they should not be punished. They should be able to have that opportunity to choose to run or play soccer or do whatever it is that they can do if they're being displaced into another school who has a soccer league or track league or basketball league. They should not be punished because it's not their fault. So if you're going to continue to restructure schools, think about those things because my child, it's too late for her. But there are many other children that are being displaced and will have to go through this. I really hope that if you're going to look at those things, you look at everything in the whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Delaney.
Hello, members of the board. Hello, Superintendent Torres. It's nice to see you this evening, and Chairman Stallings. Hello to our two new board members who were installed last evening. I believe congratulations for joining the board. We're glad to have you here. Congratulations and hello to an old friend sitting on the board. Thank you for this opportunity to allow me to speak respectfully with you about our Batch Elder School closing. My name is Patricia Delaney. I'm a teacher at Batch Elder School. I've taught at Hartford for 35 years. I taught in Simsberry prior to that for six years. I worked there as a project concern teacher, which if any of you remember back in the day, that was a school of choice where Hartford students were bused out to suburban areas. So I'd like to take this moment, if I can, to share with you the real reason that we believe Batch Elder was chosen for closure, not what we've been told, but the real reason. First of all, the first misconception at Batch Elder that we went with was that parents, students, and teachers are respected by the board. Not so. We found this out one night as students, parents, and teachers were informed on December 19 via Channel 30 NBC newscast at 6:00 that Batch Elder School was closing. All of us were awed, surprised, hurt. News media received a PDF file from the Hartford Schools early in the morning of the 19th and were sent out to the school before 10:00 in the morning filming. Parents knew nothing, teachers knew nothing, students knew nothing. However, the Montessori school located at McDonough and Moylan Schools were already in negotiations with the board for approximately three months prior to that time, and the members of the Montessori staff actually came to our building unannounced and signed in and walked through our building without notifying the principal. They were sizing up our school. Second misconception, we were told that the building was being closed due to under enrollment with 411 students. Wrong again. Operating at only 50%, wrong again. Not so. Our schools, other schools within the district have lower enrollments, one being 211 just down the street from us. Our enrollment capacity is 550 students, and we are close to that. We are 90% operating room capacity. Third misconception, we were told that our school was in ill repair. Not so. Other buildings within the district are far more in need of repair and are on the state's list for that repair. However, state funding needs to be matched by hefty dollars from the board. This money is not available now, so that you'll have to wait for several years before that can happen. Since these reasons do not wash in the budgetary laundry, the superintendent said that the reasons were complex, obviously inferring too hard for our parents to understand. I think not. In the last night's meeting, the superintendent told you that there were no metrics used in determining school closings. She told you that the ERS 2020 report was not being used, so all that money spent on this outside report was negated. She continued to tell you that this is not the way we approach the process.
So, are you Crystal Dakers?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Continue on. We approached this with a holistic intentionality. The only way to get out of this dilemma was with equity and accessibility. Did you understand her plan? Because if you did, the next time I'm asked that my math scores, whether they are, I will tell you that my children enjoy learning, they are progressing. I have done this with holistic intentionality. So here are the reasons that Batch Elder was chosen. Location, location, location. We have a spacious campus located on top of a hill, and we border the West Hartford and Newington area and also Weathersfield. So it's very easy to drive for suburban parents. The holistic intentionality became an appropriate choice of words to say when we have low scores, no failing schools, no inappropriate staffing, no information showing a failing building. Batch Elder was chosen for location. This message of such a move for our school of choice can be underfunded, closed, disrespected, and be replaced by more desirable students from the suburbs while the board tries to make a money grab for the suburban dollar. Those dollars will be needed for busing our students to four new schools. The dollars for Montessori students will have to come from a massive increase of new suburban students, otherwise chairs will be remained as ghost seats with no additional funding. Monies are already requested by Montessori for repairs of our building, example, the auditorium. Monies will not be saved as they would from a normal school closing by shutting down electricity, heat, and staffing. What is happening here is the exact opposite of the superintendent's words to get out of this dilemma. We need equity and accessibility. Is it equity to move children from a safe environment into a segregated setting? Chef versus O'Neill says no. Is it accessibility to the process when over the past two weeks of dates and times of meetings and sign-up times have been changed and changed and changed again? Our parents, our children, and our staff say no. What is also happening is that the neighborhood schools of choice are being put on the black burner. City Councilman member John Gale said they wanted to support neighborhoods, they wanted to support neighborhood schools, yet they closed Goodwin Library. You are looking to close Batch Elder School. Our parents and students will not be shopping in our neighborhoods' businesses and walking to and from school using our school community facilities. Our parents will leave the city and the whole neighborhood will begin to fail. This has an adverse effect, triple down effect on everybody in the community.
Thank you. So next on the list is Carrie Benjamin.
Good evening. To finish up the paragraph, so do the right thing. Tell our children that they count. Tell our children that they matter. Tell them that they matter just as much as suburban kids. Hartford neighborhood schools should not be replaced by magnets. We are Hartford strong. Superintendent Torres, we do agree one thing, equity should exist. We are a batch worth saving. Thank you.
Next, you have Marisol Rodriguez.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I will probably get emotional, and that's not what I want to do. I want to be a voice for our children. My husband was, is an alumni of Batch Elder School. My children are alumni of Batch Elder School, and I have had the absolute privilege of working at Batch Elder School. My name is Marisol Rodriguez. I've been at Batch Elder School for 23 years. I have been there when the ship was sinking. I have been there when it's been rioting and the holes have been covered. Our children deserve the best, and the best is to be with their teachers, the teachers that they know, that they have been familiar with. The parents need familiarity. They need us to be there with them. I believe that if this goes through, as all it is pointing out to be, that decisions have already been made, that this is something that's going to go through, that regardless of our fight or our stance on the situation, we will probably not be there come June. We will be probably dispersed and put at different schools. And what I want from my children, because they are my children, when they walk in that door at 8:05 or at 8:15 until 3:25 that I give them back to their parents, they are mine. And what I want from my children is to feel and be treated as they are equal to everyone else. Suburban children, Hartford children, we are all the same. So let's leave our kids where they are. If you are planning to take our building, because you're not retiring the building, you're retiring the ID number of Batch Elder School. That's what you're retiring, and it's okay. Do with us, the staff, what you want. Just leave the kids there. The parents deserve that. They deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina Wiseman.
Good evening and thank you for listening to our concerns tonight. I am also speaking about Batch Elder Elementary. It has been a longstanding pillar in our community. It is located relatively in a safe neighborhood, and as my other colleagues have mentioned, it is planning on being replaced by a Montessori school. What does that say to our children? Does it say that they are not good enough to remain in our school, but that suburban children from neighboring towns will be welcomed? Because that would bring opportunity and financial revenue for Hartford. I understand that having a separate building with prime real estate location and a safe neighborhood are desirable for any school. I also understand that having a Montessori school in Hartford at our location is an opportunity, but I ask you at what cost? And they've already mentioned that the Montessorians have already known about it, they've already made plans. I feel strongly that Batch Elder Elementary School should remain open and would be well-suited to be considered for taking in additional students or if necessary, being used as a co-location with another school rather than being closed. Batch Elder is located in a safe neighborhood with an amazing veteran staff of teachers that work cohesively as a team. They are effective teachers individually, but our strength comes from our dynamic school community that has created a positive learning culture. This comes as no surprise with Mr. Casey as our principal and Dr. Prescott as our vice principal and dean of students. Their leadership and vision for our students are clear by their daily actions. They are visible, accessible, and they know each of their students by name. Each of our staff works together to ensure the safety of all of our students. Our staff works hard to help students grow academically, socially, and emotionally. Any student in Hartford or the surrounding towns would benefit from being part of our Batch Elder family. It would be more efficient and effective to bring students into our positive learning environment rather than to break that up and spread it apart to something less sustainable. We could reach more students if we were permitted to stay open. We could plug them into our Batch Elder ecosystem where we have created order out of chaos. Our teachers could help propel more students in our positive learning environment. I urge you to help keep Batch Elder doors open and consider other alternatives to meeting the needs of Hartford children and families. If we work together, we can make sure that all of our Hartford students get the best quality education possible. Here at Batch Elder, we believe that all children are capable of learning, and we are able to accommodate children that have different learning styles. Many students need different things in order to be successful and reach their full learning potential. Batch Elder offers many different settings and strategies for our students. We have individual, two different individual multi-disability rooms, but the students are integrated into regular education specials and classrooms as appropriate. All of our Batch Elder students are kind to these students that may appear to be different. Students accept these children as their peers. We also have several sight comparison students that have learned layout of our school and have visual imprint as their map in the heads of where things are. They benefit from using the technology of rail devices, and some students receive extra support in class or pulled out where they can learn at their own pace. Many children work with our remarkable special education department, including speech pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, that help them learn in a different way. We use PBIS for all students, but some of our students need a little extra help with behavior, emotional, or social support. These students have checked in, checked out sheets, and they meet with our behavior techs throughout the day. Also, we have lunch bunch groups and our social worker for social skills groups. Thank you.
So next is Marie Maselli.
Yes, my name is Marie Maselli, and I'm a second grade teacher at Batch Elder. I'm continuing on for Regina. We are also fortunate to have several community partnerships. We currently have a partnership with the JCC where they will be leading groups, help to assist, excuse me, help to assist those children that have, help to assist those children that have a parent or relative that is incarcerated. This will help them to work out the strong feelings and emotions that are attached, which will in turn help them to focus veteran school. Another partnership we are fortunate to have is with UConn. We have interns and student teachers who bring new ideas and insights. They are also working with small groups of students to help them with phonics, reading fluency, and comprehension. This alliance helps both our students and future teachers by learning from each other and having direct access to our veteran teachers. Batch Elder has a diverse population of students and staff. We offer a strong ESL, TESOL program with scaffolding and support for non-English speaking students. This allows them to learn in their native language while they are also learning English. We have a dedicated team able to evaluate, teach, and test these students. These students have devoted classrooms in grades two, three, and four to assist them while they gain a strong foundation in learning a new language. They continue their support through all grades. Some students graduate from the program, and some require additional time in the program for the support. Non-English speaking students have access to staff and are certified in TESOL, that are certified in TESOL. Our Batch Elder staff offer many advantages to all students. For example, our music teacher not only teaches our children to read music and sing, she also teaches all third grade students how to play the recorder. Children are encouraged to join the choir, learn to play musical instruments of their choice, and even join our rock band in the upper grades. She also gets the entire school involved in our holiday sing-along and spring concerts. Our first and third grades do book buddies together, where the children read to each other and work together to do other learning projects. The children love this time together. It fosters friendships, offers leadership opportunities, and helps with first graders and third graders with reading fluency and comprehension. Okay, so since I don't have that much time left, I'm going to skip down to suggestions or alternatives to consider. I'm going to skip down to suggestions or alternatives to consider. Closing any school will impact all schools. It will create classrooms that are out of compliance with CHEP versus O'Neil, overcrowded and making it harder for the students of Hartford to learn. In order to save money, have a district-wide curriculum. And if you are rolling out new programs, limit them to one to two per year, not to six with incomplete teaching materials or no student materials to go with the teacher materials. If we must consolidate, keep Batch Elder open and bring students to attend a school with less capacity or are located in a less, less safe area to us rather than closing our school down and replacing us with a Montessori school with suburban, um, suburban students that come in at $13,000 a year. Use Batch Elder as a co-location area if necessary. If our school, if our school is filled, we will educate all students here. Our positive learning environment and dedicated veteran staff will be most effective in providing high-quality education to all students if left together. Consider extending open enrollment free choice beyond the scope of Hartford students. Allow neighboring towns to utilize the choice system. Consider making two to three middle schools, looking at neighboring cities like New Britain as a potential model of how they did it. Busing was brought up as a potential issue at our school meeting with the superintendent, but if our school closes, Hartford will still have, have to bus close to 500 students to the neighbor, to the neighboring schools.
Thank you. Next, we have Melanie Jackson.
Hello, my name is Melanie Jackson. I am a junior at Capital Prep and I'd like to apologize for any lack of eye contact or degree that I depend on my notes during this due to the nerves of public speaking. So I'm here because I'd like to bring your attention to the irreplaceable assets our school has attained only through 12-plus years of networking that would be ruined if our school was to get rid of the high school unit. Our school offers annual internship opportunities that allow us to work with both local and distant agencies and businesses that range from the Wadworth and the NEUM to various law offices to a shop which develops supplies for those with disabilities. One such affiliate I'll be making an example of is the Lincoln Financial Group. Our school has made an effort to maintain annual contact with the company to the extent where they frequently visit to teach of their practices and even offered their first actuarial internship to a high schooler, me, which is a rare opportunity, next to unattainable for those who are not college students. By actively maintaining these deep-set connections our school has made, we're able to offer experiences and awareness to careers that offer upwards of $200,000 a year in pay, thus tackling a stifling deficit in household earnings between the city of Hartford and the average of the state of Connecticut. That deficit affects a majority of Hartford residents like me and will equip us with the skills to succeed in high-paying careers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mia Durantes.
Hello, I'm a junior at Capital Prep and I'd like to start by saying that, um, growing up, I attended Bristol Public Schools. And it's a, at Bristol, it was predominantly a white school and everything. So I came to Capital Prep and obviously it was a huge culture shock for me. I never experienced anything like this before. I was very quiet. I was always very nervous and things of that. But Capital Prep made me very confident and made me do things I'd never thought in my life I'd ever be able to do, like sitting in front of you right now, because I don't know how I'm doing this, but I am. Ever since, ever since I was a freshman, um, since the second semester of freshman year, I've been taking college classes over at Capital Community College. And that's just one of the many things that Capital Prep offers. Um, um, also, we have Action Club at Capital Prep and we have done amazing things at Action Club at Capital Prep. But that's just the beginning as well. Capital Prep turns our students into social justice warriors, into people that I have never, I have never even thought I'd be able to meet. Um, another thing I'd like to say is I would really hope that in this decision, all personal opinions about Capital Prep would not factor into this decision. The larger community issue goes far behind the individual. We are Capital Prep and I will continue to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Dunham.
I'm just gonna apologize too, because I'm probably not gonna stare at all, because I'm really nervous, so I'm just gonna begin. Hi, my name is Joseph Dunham. I am a junior at Capital Prep and my pronouns are he, him, and his. Through the use of one out of many at Capital Prep's partnership, this particular organization changed my life. The National Conference for Community Justice, or NCCJ, is a nonprofit organization that advances equality, promotes justice, and builds within a lot of communities. Luckily, I had the opportunity to be a part of NCCJ's Anytown Program, which is a five-day social justice camp that focuses on community building and developing leadership skills for grades nine through 12. The other NCCJ program I was a part of prior to attending that camp was the two-day anti-bullying and prejudice reduction program for middle school and high school students called Bridges. I was able to overcome racial and gender conflict within myself all the while standing up to gender roles and the stigma of being a black gay male. It is now 2018 and I have started the new year as a new person, as an agent of change. To me, an agent of change is a person from inside or outside an institute who tries their best to transform their self, their community, and even the world by focusing on social justice issues. Through the use of Capital Prep's offered enrichments, I've chosen to dedicate my time into Action Club. For those who might not know what Action Club is, it is an enrichment where students tackle social injustices inside and outside the school. Action Club has made its presence known inside and outside Capital Prep walls by organizing a No Name Calling Week with grades five, sixth, eighth, and ninth. My friend Melanie and I chose to work with the, the eighth grade boys where we covered topics such as the pyramid of violence, toxic masculinity, and showed short films to discuss after watching. We also organized meetings with grades six through 12, educating the Capital Prep student body on the importance of a gender-neutral bathroom. We explained that our goal was to ensure that all students have a place where they feel safe using the bathroom and that there are many students who will not only feel safer but better represented by gender-neutral bathrooms and that it is their also, it is also their right. Therefore, with staff willing to hear our plea, there have been several designated bathrooms in Capital Prep, in the Capital Prep building that are now gender-neutral bathrooms. Recently, Action Club protested the idea of changing Capital Prep by changing, by creating signs, by creating signs and walking over to the Board of Education and demanded an audience with the board. Because of all these experiences, it has led me to better myself as a person and break the cycle of oppression, not only to better one for me, but for kids everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruby Rivera. Looks like there's another. There's another name, I think, on here with your name. Okay, so we are together. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm, my name is Ruby and I'm a student at Bachelor School. I would like to say that this school means a lot to me. I have all my friends at this school and these teachers are like second parents to me. I've been at Bachelor School since third grade and I have very loved. It feels like a second home and I ask you to please not close down our school. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Gisania Martínez. I'm from Vecino Junido. I am mom from a kid from Capital Prep and a nephew from Bachelor, so I'm so grateful. The first thing I want to let you know is, um, I had a heart issue when I enrolled my son to school. My son had transitional issues, behavioral delay, is the, uh, the medical record. And why I choose Capital Prep is because, um, they know, I don't have to, uh, confront more transitional issues via middle school and high school. He can roll up until high school. And the other thing is because I saw those kids, um, in school, they open the door to other adults. They, they work with little kids and they are amazing kids. They don't have, um, um, gym area. They don't have, um, playground. Nobody wants, cares if they have little books, because the kids don't have books, the little ones. So my son had one all year without books. So I don't know why, who had the Brian E. idea to remove the high school kids to keep the older school to the little one when this school, however, don't have books for little kids, don't have playground, don't have anything for little ones. So I think if you have to check what is going on on Hartford School, because the other thing is Bachelor, they have amazing teachers. My nephews are the great kids because those teachers have passion with those kids. They have programs, they have passion. And this is a family circle. If you grow this circle, the family, um, that's sociality between those kids. I don't know what could happen. So you can't impress another country. Work with this country first, with Hartford, with the kids of Hartford, not the kids from, uh, his Hartford, White Hartford, no. You have to work with the Hartford first before he, he's going to the country. Thank you.
Chloe Rogers.
My name is Chloe Rogers and I am a senior at Capital Prep. I have been attending the school from the beginning of sixth grade all the way up till now. And the Capital Prep has turned me into a person I never could have become had I stayed in the East Hampton Public School system. Not purely because the East Hampton Public School system is a predominantly white school, but because Capital Prep has such a heavy foundation in social justice and college preparation. Because Capital Prep originated out of the Capital Community College building, students are able to attend up to two or three college classes a semester. And as a result of this, I have a 4.0 GPA in college. Receiving an A in English 101, 102, and Sociology 101. Another major benefit of Capital Prep is the staff. The staff members that have been at the school the longest are the ones that are most devoted to seeing the students succeed, both in athletics and academics, and are also the staff members that are most devoted to the social justice of Capital Prep's core. This paired with things like our advisory system means that seniors will have these influential social justice individuals as major teachers and advisors, again, for our big senior capstone, which to my knowledge is the only capstone that goes out of its way to push students past their limit. In order to graduate, you not only have to complete two sports for every year of high school, you also need to write a scholarly article-level paper. You need to create a PowerPoint and present it to four different panels, proving that you have collected pre, during, and post data from student-led lessons based on a social justice topic that hits home to you. Capital Prep students enter the world of social justice warriors purely because they have actually made a change in the community and re, and have been able to raise awareness for things like students with learning differences, the LGBT community, and a vast array of others. Actually, I think that's all.
Thank you. Bridges Rivera.
Um, hello, my name is Bridges Rivera. I live in Hartford and I attend Capital Prep. I attended Capital Prep since my eighth grade years in, in 2014. Um, since the moment I stepped in there, I didn't know those were gonna be the most wonderful years of my life. Um, they do not only teach things like science and math and English, they teach more. They teach you how to be a leader, which is something I really needed to get help on, because I am a very shy person. And, um, the only reason I stand here before is because I am so devoted to this school, because it has only provided me with so many opportunities. Right now, I have attended thirty, more than, um, ten classes and have 33 credits for Capital Community College. By the time I get my diploma for high school, I will also be, um, getting my associate's degree. I have learned, I have taken classes on microeconomics, psychology, sociology, and I am sorry to say, but I don't think any other school can compare to Capital Prep. Capital Prep stands for being a collaborator, a pillar of knowledge, researcher and information processor, an empathetic citizen, and a problem solver. If you ask any other school, they will not be the same. I, I respect what your vision is with trying to restructure a school, but there is no other solution than to just simply ask us how we have been doing it the whole time. I just want to finally say that no students could ever be happier. And the reason why they clap so loud and smile is because those students who have attended Capital Prep understand that there will be no other school that will ever compare to it. And I'm sorry that you may not get that, but we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Cyrus Torres.
Good afternoon. My name is Cyrus Torres and I'm a senior at Capital Prep. I'm also a member of the Citywide Student Senate here in Hartford and I'm a member of National Honor Society, and a member of National Honor Society here at Capital Prep. I'm, oh, excuse me. I'm here to, I'm, I am here talking in regards to the restructuring of the DSD. It's because of this redesign, the school that I attend may possibly lose its upper school in the near future. As a resident of Hartford for 17 years and a student at Capital Prep for seven years, it's important that you keep the upper school intact. If it wasn't for Capital Prep, I wouldn't have been able to grow and prosper in the years I've been at my school. I am proud enough to call my school a second home. This school has taught me to take pride in who I am, in the visions I have. My growth would not have been possible with the support they have given me. I am a testament of Capital Prep along with my fellow peers who sit or stand behind me today. It is essential that we preserve this so we can forge the young minds who wish to prosper and grow, because at Capital Prep, we work towards excellence together. I thank you for your time. I hope you take my statement into consideration.
Thank you. Lauren Davern. Lauren Daveran.
They shouldn't clap so loud. I'm not gonna be able to follow as powerfully as our students. Uh, thank you for hearing me and allowing me to speak tonight and listening with an open heart, a mind and an open heart. My name is Lauren Daveran and I'm a teacher at Capital Preparatory Magnet School. I've been there for eleven years. First, I wanna thank you for including family voices in the conversation. That doesn't happen enough. I realize that families who live in Hartford are central to this conversation. I ask that you also reach out to the families that the district is magnetizing from. I realize this is difficult, but if we didn't, we would be hypocrites. We all attend the Rascal Fairs and we're all vying for the same families. And we are all promising them something better. The trade-off is that they too have to travel long distances, rearrange family schedules, stay very late for extracurricular activities. If you haven't reached out to these families and their PTOs, I implore you to do so. I also wanna thank those board members who asked critical questions last night about access. What resonated with me from the past two Board of Education meetings is what the families of Hartford have been asking for. Here's what I heard. Families want a safe, high-quality education that challenges their children. They want access. They want what C-Prep was founded on. They want access to high-performing schools like C-Prep. They wanna be part of a hundred percent acceptance to college. Ninety percent go on to college. They wanna be part of a school, and I want, I really want you to hear this. They wanna be part of a school who is above the national average in persistence, who stay in college despite, despite race, despite socioeconomic status, and despite gender. So in this school, we are closing the achievement gap, something that the whole country is looking to do. So not providing this access to Hartford residents is simply an injustice. Families did not ask to close down or phase out the access they are yearning for. They asked to be provided more of it. They asked for more of C-Prep. And what I've heard is a very specific and detailed plan that is looking to save money. What I have not heard and what families have not heard is what is the specific and detailed plan for academic excellence for when this huge shift happens? I have heard about robust programming, and I'm all for robust programming, but that doesn't necessarily mean better, and more doesn't mean rigorous. As an educator and parent, I wanna be insured of an education for my child that is preparing them for college. Preparing them to live in a multiracial society and teaching them the social justice tools to fight against the individual and institutional oppression they face when they leave us. That's what C-Prep does. And I beg you, genuinely give families what they have asked. Work with the state, work with us to fix this socially constructed racial dysfunctional lottery system and allow us to accept more Hartford students. Let's talk about the real problem. The way that you solve a problem is first you look at what's working and then you really understand the problem. And the problem is compliance. Let's talk about the real opportunity, and that's keeping C-Prep pre-K through 12th grade magnet school. And lastly, I ask the board for a fair shape. To work with us, not against us. I'm a fair and honest person and I ask for the same in return. And it's been clear to me in terms of what I've heard in the paper, I've read in the paper, and I've seen on social media, that the board chair has already made up his mind about C-Prep. And I just don't think that's fair. And I think it's unjust. And I do think that it silences all the families that we've promised more access to a high-quality education. Please put personal issues aside. Please let's look at the real issue together. Allowing more access for Hartford students to high-quality, challenging education. Allow Hartford students into C-Prep. Thank you so much.
Thank you. David Hemmy.
Good evening. Uh, my name is David Hemmy. Uh, first, I wanna thank all of you for taking your time to hear from us. Uh, I am an educator in Hartford and at Capital Prep. Uh, I've been teaching for seven years, all seven years here in this great city, at Capital Prep. I, just like my colleague, um, don't really know how I can follow up all the students that came up. The cool thing I can say is all of them were in my classroom, in middle school. Uh, that's the great thing about Capital Prep and the fact that we are K through 12. When the kids start in sixth grade, they have me and I get to see them grow for seven years. Um, my first group is our seniors this year. Um, and so I feel really old, but, um, it's, it's a great family atmosphere. And they know they have so many people behind them as they go through the challenges of high school. And knowing that there's a possibility that that high school won't exist means they will lose the access to me in the way they have me now when they go off to high school, because they'll have to go somewhere else. Um, and along with that family atmosphere, uh, because we do have advisory, um, I had the opportunity to become very close with a board member and his family because I was his advisor, or his son's advisor. Um, and we had a lot of conversations. Great, great family, great student. Um, and one of the conversations that we had, it caught me a little off guard because it had talked about some things that might be happening for Capital Prep coming down the pipe. But he said not to worry, he had me saved. He had me protected, he would put me somewhere else in the district. And it caught me off guard, not because I felt like, um, he was attacking me. It caught me off guard because I'm not the one that needs protection. I have a union for that. My students, my kids need the protection. And I also, I also like to think in the seven years that I've been teaching, I've established myself in the district. Um, I've worked on curriculum that is not just for Capital Prep, it's for the whole district. Um, and I'm all about making Capital Prep a better place. Um, I think the kids need to be first. Um, that's why I got into education, um, because I love kids. I love seeing kids learn and they're our future. And I think the board's job is to protect the kids. And if you decide and choose to close our high school, I think it's the opposite, it's hurting their futures, as you can see tonight. Um, so I just wanna say, you all are looking for excellence in Hartford. Just ask Capital Prep.
Thank you. Dr. Kizya Ferguson.
Hello and good evening. Good evening, Board and Superintendent, Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Good evening, families. This is quite, um, a moment in time, as we've described to our students, where we are truly in a civil rights, equality fight. And, and it's a proud moment to be here. My name is Dr. Kizya Ferguson and I am the principal of Capital Prep. I wanted an opportunity to speak tonight because I know that, the superintendent has done a lot of work in reaching out to the community and figuring out how do we move forward as a district when we have such constraints surrounding us. And in part of what you heard from our students, that I'm fully stunned at their ability to articulate in such a way around such a topic that is so dear to home, is that we have five learner expectations at our school that we truly enforce. And one of them is being problem solvers. And Capital Prep wants to be a part of the problem or the situation that the district is in. And so we've taken the time to go through the handouts that the superintendent has presented to the public, to really call through them as a group, as a team, and look for the opportunities that are ahead of us. And how do we remain innovative in a time when we are faced with such restrictions and such lack of resource? And we came up with something that I wanted to be, to present tonight, for your consideration. So as we look through the superintendent's proposals, she, um, has opportunities for schools to co-locate. We're currently in a co-location situation with CCCMA that Ms. Rose spoke about earlier. And we thought that, okay, so we're a magnet school. We have issues with our being compliant with reduced isolation. We've had many years of fights about giving greater access to Hartford students because that's very important to us. And so we could remain a magnet school and we could, um, I'm gonna give you a formula that's really raw. We could be a magnet school of 400 students. We can have 100 be reduced isolated, which would be our 25%. We're a school of 700 capacity. That gives us an opportunity to take in another 300 Hartford students into the building to share in the resources and share in the programming that is the magnet school. So I want to make sure that, that the team's voice is heard as we talk about moving forward. Not just taking away opportunities. Bachelorette family, I, I really appreciate you all coming out fighting for what's yours. It's the right thing to do. But let's not just talk about what we have to take away. Let's talk about how we add to what we have in a way that is beneficial not only to, um, not only to students we're currently serving, but to add students. Let's stop allowing our students to leave the district, allowing our students to seek opportunities outside of the district when within the district, there is everything children are looking forward to be successful. So I hope that you will allow an opportunity as a board to talk about, um, other options and how we move forward in an innovative way and not, you know, do a money shuffle at this time, but really look to the future and what does that mean for the students of Hartford who are so deserving. Thank you so much for your time and thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Renita Edwards.
Okay. Hello, my name's Renita Edwards. I'm a junior at Capital Prep. I'm a Hartford resident and I go to Capital Prep. So I'm gonna start off with saying, when I was younger, I never thought I would go to college. It seemed impossible. But when I arrived at Capital Prep, the environment and the culture was a change from what I was used to. Education was never a priority for me, but Capital Prep changed my mindset. Teachers are always encouraging you to do better and do more for yourself. And we have resources and networks that are just beyond. I went from getting in trouble every day and not being, not getting good grades to being student senate and a representative at Capital Prep. I feel like Capital Prep gave me more opportunities and it opened up my eyes to different perspectives. With my internship in summer, it helped me with responsibilities, college classes, um, NCCJ, Anytown, Action Club, SJP, two-sports requirement. Capital Prep is helping me get prepared for college. But I do wanna ask some questions. Why is it that inner-city schools have to, um, be... Inner-city schools do not get a quality education as other schools and we have to shut down all these schools just to get a sum of what they get? So I just wanna leave that question with you guys. Thank you.
Andrea Johnson.
Good evening. As president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers, I've had many conversations with HFT members regarding the district model of excellence, summary restructuring, and recommendations and opportunities. There are many questions concerning these plans. Not only was the timing of this huge undertaking poorly planned to share with the people in Hartford, but worse yet, many of those people heard about it on the evening news of December 19th, 2017. A horrible way to find out about your school. One very concerning, highly troubling matter is that of Bachelor School in Simpson Waverly, both neighborhood schools. And possible reasons for the closing of these schools. On the grand plan, the possible configuration and restructuring opportunities, the possible intent to have neighborhood schools with much family support and teachers that are long-term educators of the school, being closed, these attributes, of course, that I spoke of, are stabilizing a school and make it a place where families look at it as their community, a stable place for their children to be educated. This is why I'm having difficulties understanding why on the superintendent's plan of options of closing Bachelor and having students from Bachelor consolidate into Canelli, Moylan, and Sanchez Schools, therefore moving other students to the schools that are the very, that are very far away from the existing Bachelor neighborhoods. Simpson Waverly students will also be forced to attend schools far away from their campus, which is seen to anguish. The other possible opportunity for a Bachelor would be to open the school, relocating Montessori Magnet School to Bachelor and have that happen next year. A very simple question is this. Why close a neighborhood school, move hundreds of students to different schools away from their neighborhoods, and replace that neighborhood school with a magnet school? I sure hope this is not about neighborhood schools versus magnet schools. We've been down that road before. Thank you.
Thank you. Deja Torres.
Good afternoon. My name is Deja Torres and I'm a vice president of Bachelor Elementary School, um, of student council, the student council. And I'm in seventh grade. We have a lot to offer here at Bachelor. I'm in the rock band. I was on the basketball team and I was in chorus, but I believe that our school should not be shut down or taken over by a different school because even though there are not enough kids to keep it running, you should think about trying to move kids into our school since there are a lot of space and not enough students. I know there's not a big chance of this happening, but I hope you will consider this because I would really like to do my eighth grade year at the same school I've been at since I was seven and graduate with people I've known for a while, not people I just met. Thank you for your time.
I think the next two are what to be called together, Malani Reyes and Ariseli Marquez.
Hi, my name is Malani Reyes. I'm an eighth grader at Bachelor School.
Hi, my name is Ariseli. I'm in the student council and I'm the president of the student council. We believe Bachelorette shouldn't be closed because I have family members who attend Bachelorette School who are only in kindergarten and I would like to see them graduate from the same school I will be graduating from. And Bachelorette is like a second home to us. Bachelorette School is the only school we've ever felt safe in.
The staff at Bachelorette are caring, loving to their students and to their coworkers.
We are a bachelor saving. Thank you for listening.
Shirley Apate.
The possible closure of Bachelorette School has devastated our kids and our community. I have two daughters and a niece attending this school. As a parent, when time came to register my kids to start their education journey, we looked for a school that had a great education curriculum. looked for a school that had a great education curriculum, equal opportunities, safe campus and neighborhood, and a staff that loves teaching. After many internet searches, Google ratings, and recommendations, one coming from my brother-in-law who attended Bachelor when he was younger, we found just that at Bachelor Elementary School. The location is great. The relationship between principal and staff is genuine and students, past or present, love their school. My youngest daughter spent every morning and afternoon taking her sister to school since she was born. She grew fond of the teachers and was looking forward to start her own memories. Today, she is a pre-cater and faces the harsh feeling of losing a relationship with her teachers and friends and the closure of a place where she says she feels safe. We found out about the school closure through the news media. We had no courtesy call, no Bachelor parent meeting, no face-to-face approach. The source of communication was the 6 o'clock news a week before our holiday vacation. What a bummer. As a parent, I wanted answers. Little did I know that our teachers were finding out the same way we did. I still have lots of questions. Why our school? Why the lack of communication? Why our kids? Would they be moved to overcrowded schools of classes? The only answer that I was given, Bachelor will close in June 2018 due to budget cuts. I knew there had to be more to this. As word of mouth has it, Bachelor will close, will remodel, and Magnet School will move in. Our kids are not invited and they don't have the choice to go to it. Our children are being forced to leave their second home behind. They are being forced to leave the safety environment Bachelor has provided for them. They are being forced to relocate and adapt to a different location and most likely ride a bus. Our kids have a voice. Please listen to it. They deserve the same opportunities as the surrounding town kids that will benefit from the Magnet School being moved to our neighborhood. We are a bachelor saving. Please don't close our school.
Thank you. Leslie Martinez?
My name is Leslie Martinez. I will not speak. I'm emotional, so I want my children's and my niece's, I suppose, because...
Save Bachelor School.
Hi, my name is Yadiara and I am a student from Bachelor School. Save Bachelor School. It's not fair that we have to leave our second home. Please save Bachelor School.
Thank you for listening. Thank you. Ashley Martinez?
Hello and good evening. I am currently in Hartford Public High School and I attended Bachelor for my 8th grade year. And I recognize most of these people tonight. And it is true what everyone says, this school is a community, a family, basically. In 8th grade, me and four other students were chosen as members to present a proposal to our principal. And we actually found a way and as you can see now, there is an 8th grader and a 7th grader that are currently in Student Council. When I was in 8th grade, we didn't have that. And we put that as a proposal in our thing to have that happen. And to see that it has happened now, it's a great thing to see. And to see how a school, a family, is going to be left behind, is going to be dispersed, and put a new school where our kids are not even gonna be able to go to, that's not, that's not something you wanna see. And to hear it from a news channel, not from you board, not from, not getting a letter, not getting a call, not being able to hear it from you guys, it's just, it's not a good thing to do. And I, personally, I feel like it could've been handled better by letting us know instead of putting it on the news and having us go by that. And for the Capital Prep kids, they're mostly Hartford residents, some are not, but do not close their school. Do not relocate them. Don't do it. For all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mia Griffin?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie. I am a Hartford resident. This is Mia, my daughter. She's a 2nd grader at Bachelor Elementary.
We found Bachelor School because we are a big family. If we close the school, it is like stealing candy. Candy from a baby. We love this school. And... Want to see it closed. Thank you.
Larry Mounds Jr.?
Good evening. My name is Larry Mounds Jr. I'm a senior at Capital Prep. I've been going to Capital Prep since I was 10 years old, so pretty, yeah, 7 years. So when I first came to Capital Prep, I hated it with a passion. I was just like, I'm from New Britain, I don't know anyone in Hartford, I'm like, I'm the new kid. So going there, it actually changed me a lot. I met a bunch of different people, wonderful staff, wonderful coaches, and it helped me grow a lot. At Capital Prep, I have my ups and downs, a lot of my downs, but the staff there helped me grow a lot. I mean, I'm in a positive environment and I showed tremendous, tremendous leadership at Capital Prep. Now, as a senior, I am student government. I think I'm a part of Action Club, but I'm not. But, you know, I'm just that guy in the school that everyone knows. Teacher, teachers and a lot of staff come to me when they need things. I don't know why, but I'm just that, I'm that guy and that, and I really appreciate what Capital Prep did for me and helped me become the guy, the guy I am now. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I will be attending a 4-year university on the football scholarship. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julio Leon?
Good evening. I think there was a mistake, it's actually July, but hey. Thank you for hearing me out. My name is July, once again. I pronounce her he/him/his. And I would like to basically say a testimony. 12 years ago, it truly began to grow in the hearts of many visionary and passionate individuals. A vision to serve the future generations. Capital Prep was born. Capital Prep is strong and expanding as it helping students to fulfill their calling and purpose in life. Justice is the foundation on which we are built upon. This reflection can be seen in the fruit of its labor. I am a reflection of the fruit of Capital Prep's vision. I have grown and as I step into my final months at Capital Prep, if it wasn't for this amazing experience, I would not be able to tell, to stand here in front of you and say, because of Capital Prep, I have been accepted to Natalie One, before schools are my choice. And not only of my choice, but also with scholarships. Because of this, because of this beautiful experience, I have become the confident leader that I am today. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have founded my non-prophesies. Please do not allow the unknown and the weeds of the ground destroy and chop down the tree in the many years of hard work and the legacy. We are Capital Prep. Just remember this: Money is temporary, but the experience and the impact you have on the future generations is eternal. This impact will be forever. And again, just ask Capital Prep. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tammy Millsaps?
Good evening. My name is Tammy Millsaps. I am director of college admissions at Capital Prep, as well as the girls', a successful girls' basketball coach at Capital Prep. I am here to address this ridiculous idea that we are going to eliminate or possibly phase out grades 9 through 12 at Capital Prep. Let me ask you this, board members. If you had a son, daughter, aunt, sorry, a son, daughter, niece, nephew, a grandchild, listen to these facts, wouldn't you want that person to attend Capital Prep? Listen to this: We have 1,000 students on the waiting list to attend Capital Prep. Of those 1,000, maybe 100 or 115 will get in. 1,000. We wanna shut down a school. We have 1,000 people who want to be admitted to our school. As the director of college admissions at Capital Prep, it is my job to ensure that every student is admitted to eight colleges and universities. And to this day, in my 8th year, every single student that I have been affiliated with has been admitted to a 4-year institution. In addition to that, in addition to that, let me name some of the colleges and universities. Everybody's kinda sidestepped around it. We've had some kids that have been admitted to some of the top academic universities in the country. Providence, Syracuse, Morehouse, Carnegie Mellon, Cornell. We've had kids that have interviewed to be accepted into Harvard and Yale, and you wanna shut that down? Isn't the goal, board, isn't the goal to send kids to college? Isn't the goal to say, get out of your dying neighborhoods and make something of yourself? Isn't that the goal? Listen here, listen to the facts. These are facts here. We are a school. As one lady came up and spoke, Princess Rivera, we have already had one student receive her associate degree. That means she left Capital Prep and went to Providence College and only had to pay half of what she should've paid for to be admitted to that school. Listen, board, wouldn't you want your son, daughter, niece, nephew, grandchild be a part of a school where your child can take and leave with as many as 15 to 24 credits to go on to a 4-year institution? That saves a parent almost $10,000, $12,000 a year. Wouldn't you want that? I would want it. I would want it desperately. In addition to that, we have broadened the horizons of our students. Our students come to Capital Prep. Most people don't think of inner-city students as wanting to be in crew, want to be involved in skiing, wanting to run cross-country. We have been extremely successful in those sports and giving these kids a vision they can come outside of the box and try new things. Wouldn't you want that for your student? Wouldn't you want that for your child? Listen, I have to address the fact that we have students that have graduated and gone on to get masters, MBAs, and currently have, one student is working her doctor. Don't you want that for your child if they have that potential to get that? I must also say, as I said before, I am the head coach of a very successful 4-state championship team at Capital Prep. And we all know, we all know the foolishness that has been written in the newspaper about our program. The foolishness that has been put out, the lies, the false information, the negativity that is trying to ruin our school. Let me tell you something, and one person in particular, they said I couldn't name no names tonight, but that person knows who they are. You are trying to ruin our reputation. And it won't happen. You were not there. You were not there when those kids signed national letters of intent to go to college. You weren't there when those kids woke up at 6:00 in the morning to work on their game so they could get to the next level. Athletics is important to a high school environment. That's don't get it twisted here. We need to cut the shenanigans here. We all know, if people in the room don't know, we all know that this lottery system is a freaking joke. We know it's a joke. You got folks believing, you got folks believing that the lottery system is fair and equitable. It is not a blind lottery system, folks. It is not. And you allow Capital Prep to fall on that sword. That is not right. We are doing things right at Capital Prep. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, give it a call.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Sherry Zadja.
First, I wanna say, I'm here because I had two of my kids attend Capital Prep for the exact reasons that Ms. Millsaps said. Because I wanted my kids to be successful and I wanted them to become good adults, good community members, and have everything that they deserve in life. I had spent all afternoon writing something, but throwing it out the window now. But I do wanna say that if you haven't seen yet, besides what all these kids have said, we are all family. We are C-Prep. And if what you've seen tonight doesn't convince you that this school should stay open, then I'm very sorry and I feel sad for you. My kids have both won. If you close the high school next year, it's not gonna affect my kids. I have one child already graduated in college with an academic scholarship, going to college in the second year. I have another child that's graduating this year and is going to college on an athletic scholarship. He's also a National Honor Society member, so he's not your typical athlete, if that's what you're thinking. I just wanna say- I just want to say that I think the programs that this school has, I've never seen anywhere. I've never seen love at a school like I do at Capital Prep. Whenever I walk into that school, whether it be for an athletic function or during the day for a function or if I have to pick up my son, I walk in that door and there's nothing but love. Please don't take that love away because of some hate. So I'm going to be kind. Hopefully everyone got to the point. I hope I basically got my point across. But all Hartford, first of all, I appreciate you listening to us. And if all Hartford Public Schools tend to follow Capital Prep's footprint, then just ask Capital Prep, instead of destroying it. Thank you. Thank you.
Jayden De La Rosa?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jayden De La Rosa. I'm the 10th grader here at Capital Prep. I would like to start off to say that I've been going to Capital Prep for seven years now. Capital Prep has turned into a family for me. Ever since I was little, like, fourth grade, when I first came here, I've always aspired to become a Capital Prep graduate. I've grown up in the Capital Prep building. And I just look back at it now and love everything about Capital Prep. I've had an older sister graduate in the class of 2013. And she would not be anywhere she is today without Capital Prep. With Capital Prep, she's been able to graduate a four-year university in 30 years because of the credit she got at Capital Prep. And now she's a semester and internship away from getting her masters. I've always looked up to her. But now that I look back at it, I look up to all my brothers and sisters who are standing right behind me. And I wouldn't want it any other way. I want I want everyone to have a fair chance in Capital Prep. To graduate and look back at it the way I do and understand how special Capital Prep is to the community and to everything. Capital Prep is everything to me. And I wouldn't have it any other way.
Thank you. Marjorie Oni?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. I have a son who's a junior at Capital Prep, who's a pretty good student-athlete. And he started at Capital Prep last year. And the reason he didn't start when he was a freshman was because he was in the lottery process as an athlete and actually went through that way. Which negativity on that aspect has been rampant. The other thing I wanted to address is I've been reading over some of the documents that have been produced, and they're out on the website. And some of the information is talking about the instructional model that you're going to be using. And as I'm looking through it, it's so familiar to me because it's pretty much exactly what's going on at Capital Prep right now. The reason my son decided he wanted to go to Capital Prep is the school we came from was very large and he was pretty much falling through the cracks. And as you can imagine, coming into a school, a high school, as a sophomore, not knowing a single soul in the school is probably pretty difficult. It was so smooth coming into this school because we were welcomed as a family member and part of the entire Capital Prep family. So you have a great opportunity in front of you. You have a prototype that can be used to model all of this restructuring that you want to do with the high schools throughout the city. So instead of destroying the prototype, build on that prototype and use it as an example. Perhaps if we look at, somebody mentioned there's so many kids on the waiting list for Capital Prep. If we look at the kids that are actually leaving the city, going out to school choice programs, and look at that and target that financially, instead of closing down schools like Capital Prep that are one of the leaders of the community in the school system, you can it will be able to further redirect money back into the system and kids would actually want to stay in the city instead of being bused out. Anyway, I just wanted to say, don't destroy the prototype. Build on the prototype and use it as an example for the schools you want to build.
Thank you. Julia Karuk?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I originally came here tonight as a Bachelor alum and a Buckley High School alum. I have to say though, I've been really moved by the comments I've heard for the Capital Prep School. And I feel as a product of the Hartford Public Schools. And actually, my mother was a teacher in the Hartford Public Schools. And my husband and his entire family went through the Hartford Public Schools and he's now a teacher in Waterbury. I went to UConn. I worked for the Hartford. And I'm actually currently a mentor for the Career Beginnings Program, which helps inner-city kids get into college. So I'm a real believer in the Hartford Public Schools and a product of those schools. So probably, but I'm already done. So probably, nothing I can say to you is more important than the voices you hear here from the community. So I mostly just want to second what they say. But as far as my experience at Bachelor, it definitely helped shape who I am. I ended up going to school for music. And when I was in Bachelor, I almost quit playing my instrument and quit music altogether. And the band director convinced me to keep going. And I ended up being a music major. Bachelor positioned me well for Buckley, where I ended up graduating as a co-saluditorian. And I went to UConn and graduated with a 3.9 GPA. So the Hartford Public Schools are getting it done. Another thing is my mom was a single mom and I lived a block away from the school. And it was a huge advantage that I could walk to school, walk home from school, do after-school activities, not have to worry about those rides. I made friendships at Bachelor that lasted into adulthood. And even our kids played together many years later. So but like I said, nothing I can say is more important than the voices in the community right now. And I urge you to listen to those voices. I'm here in support of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremiah Navado?
Hello, my name is Jeremiah Navado. And please don't close our school. It's like home to me. All these kids in my new school will have sunshine, but I will have a rainy day. We are a big, happy family. Please don't close our school and give it to kids from the suburbs. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Majet?
Hello. Oh, this is loud. My name is Lauren Majet and I'm a teacher at Buckley High School. And I wanted to talk about something that wasn't brought up at the meeting on December 19th regarding our school. One school that wasn't discussed was New Visions, which is a school for students who have been expelled. And on the online plan, the new location for New Visions is either designated to Fox or Buckley High School. And the fact that this was even proposed and then unaddressed at the meeting is completely unacceptable. Having a school for expelled students on the campus of another school is just ludicrous. As you are all well aware of, the grounds for expulsion are bullying behavior, teen dating violence, using, selling, distributing, or possessing drugs or other substances such as alcohol, and also bringing weapons on school grounds. And the common thread among all of these things is that these students behave in a way that puts our other students and staff members in danger and at risk. And the purpose of expulsion is to help eliminate that risk in our schools. However, if we locate a school for expelled students at another school campus, we're continuing to put students at risk. And I want to give you a scenario. If a Buckley student was getting abused by a partner and that partner was expelled, if New Visions was located at Buckley, then the student who was expelled is going to return back to Buckley when they're expelled. So the victim and the abuser are still in the same location. Not only might this impact the victim's attendance, their performance, it's also going to affect whether or not they feel safe at their school. And I don't think that's acceptable. That scenario was fiction. However, I wanted to bring up one that was very real. In May in 2014, when New Visions was located across the street from Buckley High School, one of our students was stabbed on a bus when an expelled student simply walked across the street and came onto our campus and stabbed one of our students. In a letter to the staff after that incident, we were assured that safety was the top priority. And I think that placing New Visions at Buckley does the opposite of what was promised. I understand that the budget might be an issue, but as a district, we need to think about the message that we are sending. And if you allow New Visions onto either Buckley's campus or Fox's campus, then you're sending the message that student safety does not matter to you. And I know that this is what you promised us in May 2014. And it also goes against the superintendent's non-negotiables that she outlined at the last meeting. We will stand up for the safety of our students. And we're hoping that before you make any decisions, you make sure students are at the top of your priority list. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Roberts?
Hello, I'm Joshua Roberts. I'm a junior at Capital Prep. I'm also a Hartford resident. Capital Prep has been many things for me. It's a family, it's a legacy, a future, Hartford, in my belief. Also, the home of my sister, who was, my sister was an immigrant. She came off from Trinidad. She was very young. And her high school was Capital Prep. That was when they were over at Capital Community College. And she's also the first person in my family to go to college, go to a four-year college, matter of fact. Summer that she graduated, that was the year that they moved into the new building that we call our home at Capital Prep. And I went with her, not knowing that it would be my home for the next next seven years of my life. And one thing that I'd also like to bring up is that Capital Prep is a working system that I believe every school in Hartford should follow because throughout our history, we've left a legacy of students that have all been accepted to four-year colleges and also all have graduated. And also, I believe that if you take down Capital Prep, you'll be taking down the middle class because our students of Hartford, if you take down a school that's working, that's having Hartford students go to college, they come back and help better Hartford, help the community, and help create a new middle class. That's it.
Thank you. Angie Albin?
Good evening, Board members. My name is Angie Albin. My pronouns are she/her/hers. And I'm a junior at Capital Prep. A little introduction about myself. I'm a member of the Action Club, president of one of the organizations at Capital Prep, Young Women Creating Change. And I've had the ability to focus on my SJP, which is on multiculturalism towards the community and in the classroom. And I've been able to intern at the Boys and Girls Club. There's a lot you can say about Capital Prep. And potentially, it could devalue Capital Prep's potential and ability. But my experience defies all this. Capital Prep helped me discover my true passion for social justice. I know I wanted to make a change when I was little, but I felt that I wasn't given resources. Or when I was, I felt alone and not confident enough to take action upon them. And everyone who has known me since sixth grade knows that I would have never had the courage to stand up here or sit, in this case, to talk in front of all of you and speak not only in behalf of what I believe in and what I'm strongly devoted in, but in what everyone behind me in their different schools are strongly devoted in as well. And I realized something when I walked into this auditorium. Although there weren't a lot of people, I realized the school. And it really, it gave me an impact because when I had a meeting with a superintendent, I think before break, we discussed how our focus was Capital Prep. And I didn't realize that there are so many other schools that are also being affected by this but who also potentially deserve the same help and the same encouragement to create this and make this stay as our schools because that's the foundation of Hartford and its residents and residents from all over Connecticut. We are all fighting for the same purpose, to save our schools. And each individual who is here, especially the students, knows that their school is special and that makes them special. So I speak on behalf of everyone here who has experienced a tremendous impact from their own school and especially my school, Capital Prep, in its spirit. Please, reevaluate, any decision you make against these kids, this society, and our future because the changes you make today will impact us forever. I'm asking not to close Capital Prep because we are Capital Prep. Thank you.
Timothy Goodwin?
Tim Goodwin, proud parent of a Hartford Public School student, a resident of North Hartford, and proud founder of what, another school that I hope will have a waitlist soon, Community First School. As you know, I really support the highest-quality neighborhood school option for our children. As you know, I really support the highest quality neighborhood school option for our children. But I'm going to forego any other public comment tonight because really this night is for the students, parents, and teachers of Bachelor and Cap Prep. Much respect to them and to the board for engaging in the process. And also to the students that have shared tonight. It truly is an honor and a privilege to hear your voices. Peace.
Cashmere Flood.
My name is Cashmere Flood, and I am a sophomore at Assumption College and a proud alumna of Capital Prep. Where social justice is incorporated in education from preschool to 12th grade. In 2012, I received an acceptance letter as a rising eighth grader. In my previous school, I did not have a positive experience. I was bullied by students for multiple reasons in which I could not change, such as my ethnicity. It was not until I moved to Capital Prep where I had learned the importance of embracing my cultural background. In the earlier years of my education at Capital Prep, we had advisories that were arranged differently than they currently are. This is where high school and middle school students were combined in a homeroom that is advised by a faculty member. As for me and many other students who have had the pleasure of having combined advisories, this was not only a time to check on our updated academic reports, but to learn from our peers of different ages. I can remember being discouraged about myself before coming to Capital Prep when it came to thinking about college after high school. However, witnessing the process of my senior advisees, opening up their acceptance letters, breaking down the college process to students, SAT prep classes and tests, and speaking openly about their ups and downs both inspired and motivated me. This experience made college seem more attainable. Seniors at Capital Prep are required to do a senior social justice project that allows them to identify injustice in the world and implement a treatment to prevent it. The topic that I have chosen has allowed me to unite middle school and high school students together. I implemented a program that allows high school students to assist middle school students with conflict amongst peers. This program has allowed the students to resolve conflict amongst peers with guidance of upperclassmen. My purpose in creating this program was to continue the cycle of peer support and using support from older peers to create a path for students. The topic that I have chosen and the tools I was given as a high school student at Capital Prep has enabled me to identify social problems on my college campus and create a treatment to resolve them, reducing microaggressive comments amongst faculty, staff, and students. The purpose of this school is to create agents of change. Teachers give tools to students on how to identify social injustices right before entering college, which is extremely essential. Without the tools from my teachers or seeing social justice projects from peers at the time, I would not have been confident in creating change. So please, before you make the decision, understand that there is a student who is much like I was that can benefit from the support of a school with various grade levels attending and an opportunity to see students come together. I close this speech with a quote from the Dalai Lama. "Everything you do has some effect, some impact." The effect of taking out the high school part of Capital Prep, you are rejecting students the tools they need to make this world a better place. Thank you.
Karen Holmes.
Hello, support kinder and board members. I'm a parent of a Capital Prep student. And I'm here to ask a question. You've heard how articulate, well-spoken, and intelligent these students are that Capital Prep is producing. And my question is, why is Capital Prep on the chopping block of all the other schools and all of the other ways that money could be saved? These are... My child is a part of this. And these are your kids, superintendent and board members. These are the shining light in the vest of Hartford, Hartford Public Schools. Why is the school and these students that are so intelligent and articulate, why is it on the chopping block? It's a progressive school. They're producing kids who are going to college and graduating from college. So it seems as if there's some other ulterior motive why you're trying to eliminate the upper school. It just does not make sense to me as a parent. And I'm sure if anyone who has any kind of common sense will know, you don't take down the vest. It's the gleaming and shining light of Hartford Public Schools. These are your kids who are doing so wonderful. And a social justice school, and they're up here now standing up to the injustice if you shut down the upper school.
Kyla Cruz.
I'm Kyla Cruz. I'm a student from Red Children. And unfortunately, and our school is being closed. And it's very sad that some students in our school have been in the school for more than one year. And their students are just getting there. And also teachers that have been supporting and teaching our students. And this is very upsetting and hard to pass through because it's... Jesus answered, "Even if I testify on my own behalf, my testimony is valid for I know here I came from and I am going. But you have no idea where I come from or where I'm going."
Basically, I work for you each and every day, and I'm proud to do it. But if it is the money... Here's my wallet. You can take it. Save the food. See, grab that. You're all here. I was standing over there, and most of you guys are like this, like this. So I have a little respect, because everybody's got respect. Even this, all this stuff right here, paying the living first and then nothing first. May I not say?
Thank you. Kelly Santana.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Santana, and I'm a Hartford resident. And I'm a grandmother of a student in the Hartford Public Schools. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize to Batch Holder for you assuming that the way you found out was on the news program. Because I heard about your school closing on October 24th when I went to the Parent Coalition meeting. And there was a PTO member from your school there at that meeting, a so-called PTO leader, had the information. So if you're staying, get it. You just need to check with your PTO. Because the information was out there prior to the news. That's just sticking up for the superintendent doing her part. I'm originally from Pennsylvania. I've been in Hartford now for about 11 years. I come from a school district that is run on a Clear Path program that the superintendent has come up with. I agree with her program. And I commend all the staff for the prep, the students, the teachers, all the good work you've done and all of that stuff. And you know, I feel the emotions that you guys have in this room. So I really feel like I'm out of faith with this, what I was gonna say. But I wanted to support the superintendent in a room where there's so much emotion going on. Okay, that's why I'm here. Second, I believe the Clear Path plan gives the opportunity to all the kids of Hartford District to establish lifelong friendships and things that they don't have access now because of the pre-K to fifth grade, and then there's no middle school for them to go to, and then they have to go displaced and all the discombobulation that's in there. The new plan that she came up with eliminates a lot of that stuff. So I challenge the teachers of Capital Prep and the teachers of Bachelors and everybody else that are gonna be displaced. Take what you did at that school to the new school and enhance the kids that are still here. I'm just saying. That's just my opinion. That's just my opinion. I'm entitled to my opinion. Am I getting paid? At the end of the day, let me repeat myself. I am a grandmother. I am a stay-at-home grandmother. I had my first child when I was 14 years old. I have a seventh-grade education. I want something different for my grandchild than I had. And if... My grandson's only in pre-K4, and I'm terrified. And I just started out in a public school. When I had to register my son to go to public school or magnet school, I was very confused because we don't go through that in the state that I'm from. Each district has a school, and each school goes into a middle school, and each middle school goes into a high school. So y'all's program is very, very different up here. But the plan that the superintendent has come up with, I mean, at the end of the day, if we don't do nothing, we're gonna be in the exact same place we were. At this time of year, next year, we're gonna be in the exact same place we are now. And we got test scores that are telling us that there's students being tested, and a handful can read and write in the pool. At a Parkville, at my elementary school, 210 students were tested between their grades three through fifth grade, and only 24 can read or comply. Yeah, that's not nobody else's problem because it's not your school. But at the end of the day, where's the passion from the teachers? Where's the passion you had when you chose your career as a teacher? Like, you guys started out wanting to be a teacher, right? I'm still saying. I'm just...
I'll have order. Please address the board. Please address the board.
I am addressing the board. I am addressing the board, and I apologize. All I'm saying is...
No worries.
I believe with the test scores that we just got issued at one of the meetings that I went to as a newcomer, those test scores floored me. Floored me. So then my question is, it's not just the teacher's problem. It's not just the board's problem. It's the parents' problem. It takes a village to get it all together. And this Capital Prep behind you is very, very passionate. And they sound like what they got going on back there is really, really good. Like, so maybe we should use them as a model. It works both ways. I'm neutral in this. I'm on board with what she says. There has to be change. I like the plan she came up with, and I think it's worth trying versus just cutting it out, cutting it out, cutting it out. There's a lot of emotion involved. That's all I...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just say this again. I understand there's a lot of emotions in the room, and I get that. When we have speakers speaking, allow them to speak, please. Please address the board with all your comments and your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Kamara Smith.
Good evening. My name is Kamara Smith. I am a 2011 graduate of Capital Prep. And I am a 2014 graduate of Monmouth College. I'm from Hartford, Connecticut. I grew up in the northern, born and raised. I started out my student at Monmouth King. And I left Monmouth King in 2005. I started attending Capital Prep on the very first day Capital Prep opened. I still remember that day. It was actually an interesting day. So I remember I was in the auditorium at Capital Community College. Mad that I was there, and texting my friend on a boost mobile phone to show you how long ago that was. And he was telling me, because he went to Fox after Monmouth King, and he was telling me about a brawl that they had. And at the time, I was sitting there, kinda upset that I wasn't there to see the fight. And to me, that kinda shows what happened and the difference and the impact that Capital Prep has had on Hartford residents like myself. That friend who was texting me never went to college. Never went to college. And I have six brothers and sisters, one of seven. And I only have one other brother, one other sibling that has attended Capital Prep. He's also the only other sibling that has a college degree. He attended Hampton University and then went on to Georgetown Law. And after graduating from Georgetown Law, he passed to Hartford, Connecticut to practice. So I came with a whole bunch of things that I thought I wanted to say. And then I heard all the kids or students, the current students at Capital Prep. And it was inspiring to see that what started in 2005 has became something so immaculate. The outreach and the impact that it has had on Hartford. And they had kids from Britain, and as far as East Hampton come to speak about the impact that Capital Prep has had. It's not just Hartford that Capital Prep has impacted. It's the entire state of Connecticut. Phasing out the high school would have a negative impact because the high school is a major part of what makes Capital Prep special. We produce college graduates. The purpose of Capital Prep, the design of Capital Prep, is for the end product. The end product is a college degree. So phasing out high school would eliminate that product, which is the same product that I think your new plan says you wanted to make. I'm just a little confused. They created this beautiful hashtag, and I'm in with that. If you want results, if you want to make Hartford better, if you want to improve Hartford Public Schools, just ask Capital Prep.
Thank you. Jordan Green.
Hey. How y'all doing? How you guys doing? How you doing, board? I know that ding is gonna go off, but I drove all the way from Bridgeport, so I'm just gonna get this off real quick. But just up here to talk about Capital Prep and to talk about the impact that Capital Prep had on me. As an alumni, I have to go back to sixth grade, seventh grade. Seventh grade, I was at Hartford Magnet Middle School. They used to take us on trips to Trinity College. I remember grabbing my social studies teacher, Ms. Thomas, telling her, "Why are we here? This school is lily-white. Nobody here is black except for the cooks. Y'all trying to make us cooks?" And she was annoyed with me. She was like, "Shut up, you..." She was like, "Shut up, you..." But what ended up happening is through Capital Prep, I was able to attend Trinity College. And that happened, one of your board members is also, I went to school with Mr. Hernandez, great guy. When I look at the impact Capital Prep has had on me, it's immense. We start with the college preparatory slogan model at our school. I was able to earn 24 credits that transitioned over to college for me and I used those to help me navigate and find which major I really wanted. On top of that, when I look at the internships, I interned at, for the Hartford Public Schools in the finance department and I also interned for Prudential Retirement. That helped me realize that, you know what? Business wasn't the way that I wanted to go. And as of right now, because of the Capital Prep model, because of the social justice content, I am currently a teacher at the Capital Prep in Bridgeport because I benefited from it solely because of the benefit I received. And it's a benefit that I wish everybody could receive. My, the, oh, there goes the bell. All right. But when I look at my life, typical inner-city story, if you're looking at the demographics of single-parent, I didn't meet my dad until I was 23, but if you look at Coach Levi, if you look at Mr. Fulton, I hated Capital Prep when I first went there because they tried to give me structure, which I lacked. And they fought with me tooth and nail to make sure that I had a system in place that would make me successful. I look at it, that comes from the curriculum that pushes rigor and love through the advisory system, through the close relationships you build with teachers because of the small student environment. What I'm asking you guys to consider is, well, okay, use Capital Prep. Use the system that is in place, keep the school intact and then build on this so that the rest of Hartford can have what I have. And just to speak on it, mister, this is how much love I have for Capital Prep and how much I've seen it benefit others. Mr. Fulton called me up one day, it was like to his office, he was like, "Hey man, I need your help." There was a certain student, Mr. Stalinger, who needed help with math and he said, "Yo, do you think you can help him out so that he could graduate?" I don't, I didn't know that one. But because of the love that I have for the school, because of the love that the curriculum showed me, I blindly went in to help him. So this, this means a lot. This is love. This is everything. And if we could take this and give it to as many disadvantaged kids out there as possible, we'll win. Hartford will win.
Thank you.
Carol Gale.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to share some thoughts. I am a Hartford resident. My name is Carol Gale. Very proud to be a Hartford resident, born and raised in this wonderful city and also very proud to be a Hartford teacher of 28 years. And I am here to speak to your plans for the Global High School, which is scheduled to close in three years, which I support its closing and I would ask you to close it sooner. I believe that Global offers a very substandard education that I don't think any student in the city of Hartford deserves to be receiving. Seniors can only receive a half-day program because there's not enough teachers in order to give them a full day, which means they don't have electives, they don't have the same options as other students have beyond the core of which the state of Connecticut requires for graduation. The half-day program of seniors only serves to encourage underclassmen to leave school early, which is definitely getting in the way. We have no bells because we share this school with another school and that only encourages kids to linger in the halls and be late for class. Our junior and senior classes are so small because students leave because the school is substandard, that we only have one class of both juniors and seniors, which means they have to remain with each other all day long. I have heard complaints from students who have said they're tired of the same kind of nonsense that they've been putting up with for three or four years from the classmates that aren't as serious and they have to stick with it all day like a middle school student. The staff, because of cuts, have been stretched to handle both middle and high school. This is also cutting into a quality educational program as it is spanning a very wide developmental range and two different floors, which means teachers are running up and down stairs. The result also of a lot of the problems in the school is a very high staff turnover. With this kind of staff turnover, you can't build rapport and any good educational program relies on rapport. In fact, I would argue that school success is inexplicably tied to good relationships. I have to applaud Bachelor. Oh my God, what relationships they have. That's what creates a safe and supportive environment conducive to learning. Unfortunately, Global doesn't have that. And I have tried. I've tried for three years to help encourage that to happen. I'm running community meetings this year, they're limping along. It's not an easy environment to try and change. We don't have what Bachelor has and we don't have what Capital Prep has. I would argue that you can take the 150 students that are currently in the Global High School and place them in Capital Prep and I'd be thrilled. That's what they deserve. If we want to truly have excellence for our Hartford students, then we also have to recognize when an idea has failed. And the Global High School has failed. It just has not been able to get off the ground. I am there for my third year, I'm the senior-most teacher in the building. And I can also tell you that at least 50% of the teachers there today will not be there next year. They're all talking about leaving because it's just a bad atmosphere. It's not conducive to teaching, it's not conducive to learning. So please, close it in June and do the city a favor.
Michael Downs.
Evening, board. My name is Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford and I've been with the school system now 37 years, president of the Hartford Federation Substitute Teachers. And the first thing I wanna say is, we gotta stop paying rent. There has to be a, there has to be a procedure for, a soon procedure for pathways to technology moving back into a building we own. Also, great path moving back into a building we own. Also, do we own the building that Classical Magnet is in? Because if we don't, they better move out of there, move into a building we own. Also, I'm assuming that the Sports Medical and Science Academy is owned by us. That may not be. We oughta find that out. I just, also, I wanna address the Simpson Waverly and Bachelor buildings. If they're being closed, I hope it's not for the physical properties because they both were just recently renovated. And that's where a lot of our money's gone in the past 15 or 20 years is renovations. Ever since the state took over and then along with the corporations here in Hartford decimated and it ripped the heart out of the Hartford Public Schools. I think that in the past 15 years, in the neighborhood schools especially, but even in some of the other schools, it's always been a problem, especially long about spring, where there's not enough writing paper and not enough toilet paper. And so I'd like to conclude by stating that, or saying that, remembering that Robert Cotto, former member of the Board of Education, mentioned at the last month's meeting that the parents whose students are going to a school that's going to close and they're gonna have to move to another school, they're gonna expect something different and something better. And what I mean is, that, he really didn't conclude, but I think he meant something like vocational technical education, more physical education and athletics, which was cut, and more libraries, still the libraries aren't, and many of the schools have no librarian, art, music, special ed, and a middle school system. We're the only municipality in the state of Connecticut without a middle school system. Even as old as I am, when I was in school, I went to a middle school. Thank you.
Devon Jones. Oh, he left. Okay, thank you. Tashima Ingram.
Hello. My name is Jeremiah Taylor. I'm a junior at Capital Prep. I made a conscious decision to apply at Capital Prep and was fortunate enough to become selected to this school. I'm a resident of South Windsor who, who's my parent, Nicole K. Taylor, that pays taxes, which funds $13,000 to get a seat at Capital Prep. We chose Capital Prep because of many opportunities that are offered and the diversity that exists here. I'm a member of the COIC Congressional Youth Cabinet and with Congressman Larson and a member of the National Honor Society and deputy head boy of the student government, co-captain of the boys varsity team and just to name a few things that I'm involved in. This school has gave me so many opportunities that I know that predominantly a white school like South Windsor High School would never give me. And one of the best things about this school is that I've had friends that has been the most empathetic people that I can ever be around. Thank you, have a good day.
So I think we're on Tashima Ingram.
What? If I may, again, I just want to point out that we're not sharing time. So if your name is called, please come and if not, we're gonna move on to the next speaker. But we're not going to share time, but because it was a student, I'll permit that. But from this point forward, we're not going to do that. So just have water. Thank you.
So I think Tashima Ingram is not, doesn't appear to be here. Minaja Lewis.
Hello. Let me take my glasses off. I can't see you guys, but it's okay. My name is Minaja Lewis and I'm a senior at Capital Prep. I've attended Capital Prep for only three years, but I've made relationships that'll last a lifetime. These relationships have not only come from students, but teachers as well. Now, I started Capital Prep my sophomore year. I got accepted to four different four-year colleges with all academic scholarships and I couldn't have done it, and I couldn't have done it without the help and support of my teachers and peers. Advisory and enrichments are being implemented into other schools, or so I hear, but as far as I'm concerned, my school has had these tools for years. So why target us if you're getting ideas from us? Where's our credit or our at-button, you know? You can't take credit and just take away our upper school. Instead, you should celebrate us for we are a student body that embraces differences such as race, religion, sex, sexual orientation, abilities and disabilities are what make us and our advisories that much more special. The fact that as a 17-year-old going off to college to work as a children's lawyer, I'm able to go out into my community to give information on child abuse for my senior justice project that I worked so hard for. I'm college-ready and that couldn't have happened without my school. And I'd just like to give a quick shout-out to all the teachers who I think have done a phenomenal job choosing their career. I'm so proud of you and I thank all my teachers because, you know, I, I don't know, we are Capital Prep. Just ask Capital Prep.
Gashard Roden.
Hello. I'm Gashard Roden. I'm currently a senior at Capital Prep and I am currently Eagle Scout. Honestly, I don't know what more, how much more you need to hear. You see how we feel about Capital Prep. And I, being a student that lives in Hartford and also immigrant, without Capital Prep, I'd probably end up on the streets or dead. So right now, I'm here asking you, how would you feel if you hear, if your son was still attending the school and then you have to hear, "Oh, your school's gonna shut down in the next year"? Personally, I'm leaving, so it's not gonna affect me at all. But the people behind me, my siblings, my brothers, sisters, teachers, family are all here asking you the same thing. Leave Capital Prep alone because this school is the school that you're modeling your whole Hartford remodeling play off of. So why would you tear that down? Why would you waste everyone's time to do that? And before I leave, I have one thing to say. I am a confident young man and that's because I'm a Blazer.
Siya Singletary. Siya Singletary. June Hartley.
Good evening. My name is June Hartley. I've been a special ed teacher in Hartford for 18 years. Bachelor School is a strong community of students, parents and staff who work closely together as a team. From breakfast to the end of the school day, the children are provided a strong support system of educational, behavioral and physical support. Walk through our halls during instructional time and you will notice the halls are quiet and the students are fully engaged in their work. If a student is in the hallway with a need, all staff are available to provide the support to help the student get back on track. This is a school with dedicated staff, ready to assist and support all students. I teach middle-school-age students with multiple disabilities. These students are fully engaged and supported in all of their classes. Walk by the Unified Arts classes and you will see middle-school students working nicely side-by-side with my students. Students asked to come and read to or work with the students in my class. When in the hallway with a student who is using his walker, students and staff walk by and greet, encourage and praise the student for his efforts. The students at Bachelor School greatly enjoy earning Bobcat bucks to use in the Bobcat Den to purchase small items or earn an activity. Students should be transferred into the school where they will receive the support and care needed to provide a positive learning environment. This is a school whose team and support systems should be recognized and emulated, not torn apart and dispersed. Thank you.
Thank you. Raquel Calderon. Victor Santana.
Victor Santana.
How you doing, folks? Um, uh, this has been a very overwhelming, uh, situation here. Um, to see this, this unification here, to see this family and stuff like that from both schools has been amazing, and I hope it's affected you guys. Um, um, I'm, I'm a, I'm a student at Central Connecticut State University. Um, I'm an alumni of Batcholder, an alumni of this school that we're sitting in here today. Um, I got my associate's degree. It took me eight years to take, uh, to get my associate's degree. Okay? Uh, it's taken me about five or six years to get my bachelor's degree. Um, I've been going, I've been going to school for so long, the government doesn't want to, uh, pay for my education anymore. Um, I'm a product of a very terrible Hartford school system in the early 2000s, specifically Buckley High School. Um, I don't remember learning anything from here. I remember how to defend myself though. Okay? Um, my, uh, I'm a, I'm a, I got custody of my son, primary custody of my son about a year ago, December 5th. Um, and he had to come back to the state when I, when I got him, and he, of course, that was, it's a bad transition for a six-year-old, a five-year-old at the time. And, um, he, he came over here, and he was scared to go to school. He was scared to meet new students, to meet new teachers. And so the first day he came, um, and we come to find out who his teacher was, um, I was very excited about it. Uh, when we met her in the cafeteria, um, I told her, and she recognized me. Uh, then I remember her after she recognized me. Uh, she taught my brother, my brother now is 28 years old. Um, she is a kindergarten teacher there, and to, he was, she saw how nervous he was. She grabbed his hand and let him lead the whole class all the way across the building. She's, she's, she's sitting right behind me right now, and she's one of the most amazing people I've ever met. That, that can't be taken away from my son, uh, and that can't be taken away from these kids. I mean, I wish I had a school like Capital Prep where I could have probably finished my education a little bit faster. So why can't we grow from that? Why can't they grow, why can't Buckley become a Capital Prep? How come Hartford High can be a Capital Prep? You need to take whatever they're doing and grow from whatever they're doing. Because I wish I had that, I probably would have been done. I, I'm studying exercise science, and I would be a strength and conditioning coach, but I struggled finishing school. And I wish I had that, I wish I had this program, because maybe I would have been more motivated, more, more prepared to finish. So I just, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Vanessa Dorantes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, and members of the board. I am the proud parent of two Capital Prep student, student, athletes, and upper school students. My perspective goes beyond our family, though. Every student here, as you've heard, has a story that should be respected and honored collectively. These students have been taught that being a trailblazer is not a spectator sport. As a social work administrator and professor of social work education, I recognize the tremendous responsibility that we have before us. The academic achievement gap, as the grandmother talked about and as the man who was just here talked about, is abhorrent and unacceptable. I applaud the superintendent's strategic plan to take the bull by the horns and address this head-on as a champion in the field of social work herself. But what greater social justice issue is the education of our children. The primary focus of Capital Prep is social justice for such a time as this, right now. These are not the leaders of tomorrow, you heard them. They're the leaders of today. The preparation of our students to take on systemic and institutional barriers is the success of Capital Prep. Success should not be determined by a student's address. One, one of the suggestions in the strategic plan is the Capstone Project for high school students. This has been a requirement for Capital Prep for over a decade. I've had the privilege to be a consultant for stu-, senior students, um, on their SJP, which is our version of the Capstone. A component of that is to raise awareness of a social justice issue. The Capital Prep seniors have presented to my own senior, senior college student, who were absolutely dumbfounded and blown away at their poise, preparedness, and complexity by which they approached this project. So that shows you that not only do they talk college preparation, I've seen it. Some, some have commented in my, my classes that they wish they had the same type of experience before entering college. I too have been extremely impressed by the way these Capital Prep students approach their responsibility to address and rectify social justice problems. Thank you for your time and attention, but I implore you to maintain Capital Prep's upper school, because this community benefits greatly and loves Capital Prep, and Capital Prep benefits and loves this community. The synergistic reciprocal relationship is more powerful than you could ever imagine. If you truly want to solve the problem of the academic achievement gap, just ask Capital Prep.
This is our last, our last speaker, Vince Josiah Rivera.
Hello, my Vince, my name is Vince Rivera, and I, and I am a student from Batcholder School. I would like to say I have been here since kindergarten, and I like the teachers there. I have lots of friends there, and I am, and not willing to leave this school. My grandmother always repeats to me, stay in school. This is for you, important, this is important for your future, but I see you don't care but about my future. So I ask you to not kick us out because we count, and all you can do, I can do, to say that we are not a lot of numbers, we are... We are kids, and we want to learn in Batcholder School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and that will conclude our public comments. Uh, we have public hearings coming up and the regular, um, board meeting, I think, is on January 23rd, where we will be taking, um, the vote on this, the strategic, um, screaming the plan of excellence. So thank you for coming and good night.